Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It is six o'clock on Thursday, September 8th at the Grafton Elementary School. I'm going to order the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary, AKA Athens Grafton. As we always do at this juncture, we do introductions and we'll start with the folks who are online. I see two folks online, but we'll start with you, Krista.
Hi, good evening. Krista Gay, board member from Athens.
Good evening. Jeanette, I don't know who that was. Jeanette, do you want to say who you are? You don't have to.
Matt Mills, I was the interventionist in Grafton.
Very good. All right, and to my left, we'll start with Harold.
Yeah, Harold Norris from Athens.
Lynn Morgan from Athens.
Kathy Cianalgoodwin from Grafton.
Jack Brier from Grafton and Chair.
Artie Merrill from Grafton.
Angela Cardi from the Grafton Elementary School.
Andy Haas Superintendent.
Excellent. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I don't see any of the... We may talk about doing the walkthrough at 9:81. A couple of people sort of did it already, but I don't know who's not seen the building, but we'll touch on that. Actually, Krista, you haven't done a walkthrough and I don't know how I would do that to accommodate you. Maybe I'll put my iPad on and walk you around at some point after the meeting. So let's consider doing that. Do we have communication and public comment for item four? Not hearing anyone signal that. We'll go on to approving minutes for July 28th. I don't know if everybody got a chance to see those minutes. Did anyone see any hiccups anywhere on this other weekly document? All right, then I'm keen to motion to approve the minutes as written.
And we approved the minutes as written?
Yes, and a second. So all in favor, start with Krista. Did you see?
Hi.
Rev?
Yep.
Lynn? Kathy?
Hi.
Artie?
Hi.
Guess we've all seen them and we all approve them. Onto 6A reports of superintendents starting.
So as we're getting into this, do you want me to read through my report that I did last night? Or is there pieces that you'd like me to touch on?
Well, some people weren't part of that.
Okay, I'll summarize.
Right, and to the extent that you can focus on what affects this.
Yep. So last Wednesday, August 31st, we welcomed all our students back to start the 22-23 school year. And I have to say, it was exciting to see so many smiling faces. I got out to all the schools, spoke with students, and it was really great to hear kids actually say how excited they were to be back in school. And you know, and some of the teasing of like, "Really? You didn't have a good summer?" "No, I want to see my teachers." They were really, really genuinely excited and it was so cool to see that. And I think also, as you see here in the building, the work that Gary and the crew did out here to get this building ready is amazing and they're to be commended because if you're ever in schools just before we open, it looks like a tornado went through kind of thing. But here, he had it. It was pretty well down and because I've been out here a couple of times before school started and sure enough, when the school started, it was perfect. So congratulations. We had approved last year sign-on bonuses for any new employees coming into the district using SER funds. And so that first payment will be going out to employees on Friday, September 16th. So we're just letting the board know. And then, just because it came up yesterday, but any retro pay, it's not in minutes here, but I'm just going to call on it, retro pay for support staff, that's going out on September 23rd. So it's just some of that. We're hoping it might go a little earlier, but not on wood. After-school programming is supposed to begin next week. This site, Angela, correct me here, are we still working on a site coordinator for after-school programming?
Yes.
So that may delay the beginning of after-school programming. It's just a staffing issue. If we don't have the right staff, we can't have kids in the building, obviously. But we understand it's something our families need and so we're trying to... Sarah Dorn is working diligently on that. The elementary staff, so all of our elementary staff for Grafton have gone through Responsive Classroom 1 last year training and then Responsive Classroom 2 training this year. And we did the first two days just before school opened up and there'll be two more days of training. But then also, any new staff who didn't go through Responsive Classroom 1, and we have a few staff here who've been... We are working with the company so that they get that Responsive Classroom 1 training because it's kind of important. But that'll be happening. And just so everyone knows where Responsive Classroom is a student-centered, social and emotional learning approach to teaching and discipline. And it's part of our social-emotional goals for our recovery plan. It's a Tier 1 or a universal intervention, so it's what every kid gets. So it allows us that language across not just Grafton, but across all our elementary schools and then into our middle schools because the middle school went through Responsive Classroom Training 1 this year. So any students who come from here, you go up there in 7th grade, they're hearing the same language as they progress up. So it's a long-term investment. I think it does affect a couple of teachers that work up here, or at least one, I know for sure. But we'll be notifying teachers tomorrow of the collective bargaining agreement, which is Section 166, which is the retirement incentives. And that, just as any teacher who has at least 50 years, is at least 50, has at least 20 years, I said that backwards yesterday too, of service in the district and announces their retirement and is enrolled in the district's 403B plan, shall be eligible for a $7,500 retirement stipend. And they must make an application for the retirement stipend on or before October 1st of the year they're looking to retire. And then the board has power to waive that date if they come in late. So it's just really important that we get that out to our teachers who are looking to retire, possibly, and they get that admission back to us. We're going to be contracting with Criterion Duca engineers for $33,000 and change. And that's going to be to conduct a facilities audit on all of our buildings. So they will be here just with that independent view of looking at all of our infrastructure, so the actual physical building, but also the components of the building. So heating, electrical, lighting, and giving us that piece and then we can take that back and we can bring back to you. So as we're looking at how do we prioritize repairs and just have that long-term planning, how then do we apply our SER funds where they're needed? Because as Jack points out, they're in competition with all the other districts. So we want to make sure that we get that out.
I have another question. So $33,000, is that covered by the funds?
SER funds are paying for that, yes, thank you. And then also, as part of our recovery plan, we will continue to work with focused schools. And we began working with them two years ago on developing our recovery plan and then our strategic plan. And then this year, as part of that whole thing, they're going to be working with us on building leadership capacity within our buildings. So Angela has identified some teachers who will work directly with her to come to a larger meeting, but then do group work with the whole faculty here on building that leadership capacity and to, again, develop a school-based instructional leadership team to drive the improvement process. So as we go through things, really working on that and working on goals and aligning strategic, aligning them to a strategic plan. And so the larger team will meet monthly, and that's across the whole SU. And then Angela will meet with her team and her faculty a couple of times a month on developing that. And so because we love acronyms in education, you'll hear the acronym I L T. That's an Instructional Leadership Team. And then we also included, just in that report, there's a memo from the Secretary of Education on the ban on suspension and expulsion of students under the age of 8. So that was a law that was signed. So there's no need for any action, but just to make you aware of it. And then we just have our overall enrollment numbers on a monthly basis. We'll update those and provide them to the board on a monthly basis. But right now, Grafton is at 38 students. And so we'll continue to do that. And we can break that out by grade level or Angela can. This is part of my report and will be there on a monthly basis.
Sorry.
I was going to ask for questions.
You talk about the leadership team. Is that replacing what I remember as a developmental team with teachers to each year, every... Because you have to have so many credits every seven years. Is that what this is? Is it something different?
This is different. This is about building capacity within each building so that it's not just a top-down driven decision as you're looking at professional development, as you're looking at initiatives within your building, so that you've got faculty buy-in on those initiatives as we pull it together. So from the top down, as we develop SU goals and a strategic plan, that will be distilled down to this school here through that I L T as they develop goals for Grafton Elementary School. And so they align, those teams all work together. So it's a team effort? Yes. That you're talking about, Billy. And they're small teams? Yep. So they're not, obviously, we have a small faculty here, but even like a high school level, we're not bringing the entire coordinator crew together because they already have that. This is a smaller unit that can really drive and look at those initiatives and help make those decisions.
Because I have, the problem we're having with the fees being so short and that COVID and the external damage, is that something that this group that's serving the school, will they be looking at that and possibly giving a recommendation on how to do like that? Is that beyond that?
We can definitely, you know, tag and ask them to really look at that. They may not, they may come back and say, "You need to address this," and...
Cool.
Well, and for this nominal fee, we'd be happy to give you an engineering plan for that. But, so they may come back and identify the issue, but then allow us to go out to bid. But I can definitely speak with them directly about, we know, these are the existing major problems. Like there's an issue, we know about insulation in some of the upper areas and the hot, you know, cold and creating a cold space so that you get the right drip off, which might cause part of that. So they may come back and say, "You need to address that issue."
Yeah, okay.
They also may come back and say, "Bless you, your boiler needs to be replaced," kind of thing. Or they may come back and say, "Your boiler's fine and it's got another 10 years on it." But then we can map that out for how we're going to address that.
Right, okay. Wouldn't you put a lot of faith in your custodial staff here that they know this building, they know what some of the difficulties are in their maintenance?
Yes, and that's part of it, but this helps you give you a long-term view plan. That's part of what they do, is help you develop a strategic plan for when you address things and when you don't address things. Like when I look at the painting of this building that needs to be done, it's clear that in the past, painting has just, like, the paint has blistered and we painted right over that and it is really thick now. Like, it all needs to come off and be reprimed and everything. But the other purpose of having this facilities audit is to really help us prioritize how to spend our SER funds and where we can spend them. Because the paint is a major issue, but that wouldn't be covered under SER. And so that will help you as a board determine if you have carry, if you have unbalance, should you earmark it for specific projects? And maybe it's a project that we're going to tackle in a couple of years, but then you can earmark monies every year until you get to that project. Or we need to raise this money now because we have this emergency. So we want to give you guys the most accurate information and just have that fresh look.
With the deterioration of all the other school buildings that we have, this one not being as bad, I guess, in some areas, does that, would that put us down with allure? Or do we do it all separately?
Any separate priorities?
I mean, is Saxon-driven separate plus or Lockenham or whatever?
So one of the things we know, heating and ventilation in all of our buildings needs to be upgraded. That is a high SER priority, so we would look at that piece of where it is. But like the painting, where that might not fall under SER, then that's something we need to discuss on how to address that differently. So there's certain things that can be handled under SER because it has to be COVID-related and preventive of COVID. So we look at that piece. But helping in prioritizing also is so that we don't forget about Grafton. Right? Because we could easily expend all of those funds in one or two districts right now within the SU.
One of the things, yeah, this will be, there'll be a wrestling match at the SU boards level at some point and I can assure you that our views will be represented. But one of the things that we have been doing is having boards report of the walkthrough. We're not going to be just dependent on these, you know, outside professionals. We've had a look at some of the issues in some of the buildings. And one building in particular has been kind of eye-opening. So without getting into details about that, there may be a looming sort of emergency issue there that we will have to sit down and discuss. I think you matured a bit into the weeds, but it's there.
So two years ago, I walked every building within our SU, like, back when I was director or part of a, actually, the course I was taking, and did kind of this same kind of assessment in talking with our maintenance folks. And again, this isn't a knock on any one of our guys because they, they do a phenomenal job. But sometimes, they're trying to save a penny and that becomes uncoolish. And when I used to run a building, and I tell the story, we had a failure and the new custodian, and he said, "Here, come take a look at this," and popped open the ceiling tile and we looked up and there was this Lego guy who was holding up this pipe and he finally failed. But he was the perfect size to hold up whatever needed to be held up. And so to try and save some money, the custodian had put this Lego guy up and it was perfect. It held and it held for 10 years. But when it failed, it caused more damage and then we had to eat that later. Again, at the time, sounded like a great idea, right? And so it's looking at those things and saying, you know, are we holding off on things that we, you know, we can keep it going for a couple more years and then it fails later, so.
Well, also, I have all the respect in the world for our maintenance staff, but they're not structural engineers. In fact, that's kind of a sore spot in one sense. And this is structural, architectural, this is engineering stuff. So I confess in part to bear in mind. Guys, I've got something to confess. I screwed up a little bit. There are a couple of items that I do need adjusted to the agenda and I'm wondering if I have permission of my colleagues to add the items. One is a personnel matter that I anticipate going into executive session. I don't anticipate action, but I want discussion to occur.
Would that be like a 7A under...
We could do it under 7A, but I would rather put it under 9B, if you don't mind. So personnel matter. And also, and again, this may be a three-minute conversation, policy review, item 9C, masking. I get a couple of inquiries from parents and I'd just like to restate what our position is, particularly now that we're our own district. So unless there's an objection, I'd like to have a voice with everyone's permission. Going on to finance, are we going to, do you want to talk to this? Do you want to summarize anything on this? What do you want to do here, Andy?
I think Jim was intending to come to your regular scheduled meeting, the next one.
Okay.
To talk. But I don't know if there's anything on the committee. Committee didn't meet.
There's nothing new. You know, as we discussed last night at the WNSU, we haven't had a meeting since the last meeting, which was reported on at WNSU. And the big thing will be, we'll be starting budgets shortly. So that's the main focus that will be found out there.
The only thing I was just going to briefly touch on was there, as people may know, we're making transition from our past bank to Soma Savings. And folks that are M&amp;T bank customers may have lots of reasons to think that's a good idea because it's been going on recently. But part of the conversion was bringing paychecks into that system and there was a hiccup.
So we don't use that M&amp;T?
No, we're not.
We're using Masoma.
Right, that's what I'm just saying. We're moving to that.
So if you want me to discuss that a little bit, I can briefly go into it.
Just very briefly.
So as we migrated to the new bank, there was, when we push up the direct deposit pieces, there's a 4:00 PM federal cutoff time and our payroll clerk was given inaccurate information. He told me the bank, they would take care of it. They didn't allow it. It was actually the SU.
Was this the SU?
It was just the SU.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, it was the SU. And so what that happened was typically, people see the money in their account first thing in the morning, but it didn't hit until later in the evening. Masoma had told us that it would hit, that it would be by 5:00, but it would also be dependent on each employee's bank and when that bank chose to post it. And unfortunately, and I dealt with a lot of employees who emailed me and were working with them throughout the night, they were posting at 5:15, 5:30, 5:34, 6:00, 6:34. And each time, we were, you know, I was communicating with employees who had that delay. And then we had one SU employee who had worked for another district in the SU, who was a clarifier, that the little box needed checked and so they got paper checked.
Well, but it did not affect, it did not affect. That was really what I wanted to do.
Sorry.
Check out. All right, are there any further questions, anything? Let's move then to 6C.
It's Mira.
It's you.
Okay. So just to touch on our new staff, we welcomed Adam, Vanessa, Kristy, Jennifer, and Sarah Pogue and Lizzie Hicken to our team this year. And not surprisingly, the students have been wildly successful with each one of them and it's seemed so far that our team is working really well together. Actually, had one of them say that they loved their job. I think they're feeling really supported by one another and they all seem very excited. Our new music teacher, Jennifer Garrettson, who we're sharing with the high school, is planning a musical for our students in K to 6 for this coming spring. We're incorporating more nature-based learning with the leadership of Vanessa Stern. And Lizzie and Sarah are working with Vanessa and Laura on the farm-to-school connection and incorporating the garden into our school day. Adam is a phenomenal PE teacher and he's also our resorted practices teacher, really working to build up the kids' cooperation skills, teamwork, and their competence. And then, of course, we're lucky to have Kristy Lee side with her photography skills. So we're actually just hanging tight for the tree out there to turn the perfect color, orange-red for our school pictures. So we don't have a date for school pictures yet. We're going to wait and feel it out. And then Andy had already touched on it, but just thanking Gary and Bob and Sarah for all of their work this summer. Sarah actually redid all of our enrollment forms to be in Google Doc with Fresh Font and our mascot, just making it look like it hasn't been copied for, you know, 20 years and updating it, so it's all relevant. And then the hallways were all painted, several rooms were painted. And then, as some of you saw, that the counseling office got a major facelift. So that's very refreshing. The Meet the Staff took place on August 25th from 2:00 to 3:00. And staff was able to meet with families and connect. Our PTO prepared some treats, brought over some games, and made goodie bags. And there was a little photo booth station. And then the day after that, on the 26th, the staff took a bus ride through Grafton and Athens and visited the students and families at their houses. And the staff had previously sent me their favorite songs. And I created a playlist that we blared relatively loudly on the bus. Thank you to Stanley and Kyle who put up with those antics. It was wonderful to see the students, but it was also a really fun opportunity for the team to connect and talk. And we handed out goodie bags and had cookies from the, and those are really good shop, which are from Peanut Butter Ones, that are really big. And then the half-day for kindergarten students went really great. The morning did fly by. It seemed like they could have gone for the whole day, but it was good to get them out halfway through the day. They've settled in really nicely. You wouldn't know that they were kindergartners. They really just flow with everybody. It's pretty remarkable. And I know that Andy had said that our after-school program doesn't have a start date yet due to staffing. It's really the program coordinator that we need to hire and Sarah and I are in constant communication looking for someone. And then just a couple of days ago, we hosted a flapjack welcome-back pancake lunch. And Adam and I made pancakes, Gary set up tables, Sarah checked in everybody who came. And Harlow's apple cider donated four gallons of apple cider to us. It was a great time with everybody. So that was lots of fun. Our open house is planned for next Thursday from 5:00 until 6:00. We'll have baked goods in each classroom and student work will be displayed for families to see what their students have been up to. And then everybody can walk through the building and explore all of the great learning spaces. On Tuesday, the 13th, at 10:00, we collaborated with the Grafton Library and we're going to have Marco Levy for an hour of music and fun from K to 6. We welcomed Marcos a few summers ago during our summer program. And actually, Eileen Prager brought it up, like, "We should get him back." And so there's a grant from the library that they got and he's coming back. Coffee with the Principal is Tuesday, September 13th. Please encourage folks to come. And then Erin Shaw is one of our pair professionals here and she's getting together an order form for GES Panther here, so be on the lookout for that. And then we've begun to talk about our Thanksgiving feast. And of course, we'll plan with the PTO and ask for folks to cook turkeys. And the inn is all set to make mashed potatoes. I met with somebody from the community who sort of gave me a rundown of like, who does what. For all of that, we'll plan that closer to Thanksgiving and more so in October.
Future challenges, though, you focus usually in... Future challenges, though, you focus usually involves numbers of support.
Could I, could I beg if you could do an adjustment if everyone's in agreeance to add something under new business?
Okay, sure. We got a D coming.
Sorry, building usage?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Sorry. I don't think any reaction can be taken, but at least we can get it out there and start the discussion for our next meeting. Sorry, I do apologize.
No, I did it.
Well, no, it's because I haven't checked an email in two days.
All right. All right. This is more.
That's it.
Questions around the horn? Krista, anything? Harold?
No, I'm fine.
What was the date on the open house?
Next Thursday.
Thursday.
Two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great job starting the year.
Yeah. I think many of us sort of dropped in. I have specialized in dropping in and announced.
Yeah.
I look very impressed.
Yeah.
On to seven, do we have resignations for appointments?
Yeah, just one resignation. It's a month old, but on August 7th, Jeanette Mills, who was our
She's in freshman.
So we're not doing this one.
So it shouldn't be done.
Not even bring it up.
Well, we bring it up, but just we're not, we're not going to. There's no actions here. Yeah. But she has left this.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we may touch on that again in a little later. 8A, this is the multiply delayed open forum. And I wanted to talk about it just basically because I wanted a sense of what we need to include. I, just having it a Q and A doesn't really throw a lot of structure in it. I thought that we might have Angela show off pictures of the, of the building and kind of, and at least some review of the staff, people that don't know. A lot of our newer people. My, my sense is they be both be assured that there are people here and be assured for their, their tenure and all. Beyond that, I'm not quite sure. I had assumed that I've set up sort of a whiteboard and sort of have people list out strengths and gaps that we still needed to address. We had a number of them itemized in the last meeting. And I wanna, wanna finish with that because it'd be useful by going forward. I'm not quite sure what else we might proffer we do. And I'm looking for suggestions on this.
Remember reading some of those notes that said that there hadn't been a chance to ask questions?
That was, and I think that
It seems like they should have that.
Yeah.
We need to let people voice what their concerns are.
Well, I think that's, that's basically what this is going to end up being. I, the last one, I think there was an attempt to manage the process. And I think that the process got away, got in the way of, of the questions. Krista, this, in many ways, this is your ball. So please throw it accordingly.
This is gonna be that. I, I agree with Lynn, and I just think it's really important just to allow parents to ask questions or even vent frustrations that they may have that's going on. I think that was evident from the, the letter that we received, as well as the parent that spoke at our July meeting. So I think that, I think it's awesome to like have a, I think it's great to have Angela give an update on the school or what's going on. But I think it is really important that we allow parents, at least at the end, to ask honest questions and kind of have like a respectful but unfiltered conversation. Something I want to note, though, is on our minutes for tonight. It says that the meeting is at 6:00 PM, but on the flyers, it says that the meeting is at 7:00 PM.
Right. And it, because we had, because I made a mistake when I talked to charges, folks at Grafton News and gave them the wrong time. I made all the flyers, fixed all the flyers accordingly, simply because once you've started to put out word, you can't, you can't change the time. And I, that was the reason for the seven.
So it's the, it's the meeting at six or seven?
Is that seven?
Okay.
Perfect.
And that, literally, that was what happened. It was just a, you know, a brain hiccup, we will.
And I, I also want to thank Lynn for the great write up in the Athenian that mentioned the upcoming meeting, as well as Jack. I know you put a lot of time into this, Angela as well. So thank you all so much for the time that you've put into organizing this meeting and getting the word out.
I'm anticipating, I wrote something for the reformer. We'll see if they put it in as well. We, they really ran out of room in terms of Grafton News. So it's a news and brief item rather than a big story. But they gave a pretty big story last month. So people do know that there's an issue and that there was a credit to September date. And I hope that the 12th qualifies as early. And as I'm seeing whatever this looks like, but, and we will, I do encourage other members to come and, as well as any staff that are interested in coming, because I think that's a useful thing. If somebody can get to know you all.
I have another, a different board meeting I have to be at that night, so.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
I think you and I did discuss that. That's a giant. And I apologize about that.
I can, I can have the parents that are on notice to, to visit.
Yeah. Bill, Bill, I think put out one, but I'd like to do another. And I knew the library was the one. And we'll just try to make sure that, and I have a list. We're trying to make sure. You know, if you, if you have friends, you have friends of friends, you have people that are on your emails, you're annoyed at that.
Well, when they're rattling around.
Quite a bit.
Just to remind you, buddy, on the Athenian or the Athens Facebook.
All that would be useful. I, I, I don't want anybody to feel that they were not made aware.
Right.
That was a real hiccup the last time. I don't want it for a second. With that, unless there's any further discussion, I'm gonna move on to 9A. I think that the walkthrough, everybody's done a walkthrough, have they not? With the exception of Krista. So I will probably briefly walk you through on a FaceTime thing at the end of the meeting or something. We'll, we'll figure something out. If it's not tonight, we'll get it done the next year too. 9A2, painting. Anyone have anything else on that besides the fact that needs to get done?
I mean, Gary walked me around the building and it was pretty eye opening. I hadn't looked at it with that kind of detail.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is I actually had my house painted by Mr. Askel, who I believe was out here and gave an estimate. Nobody has got back to him as to whether they're gonna need him or not need him. So I think he should be notified one way or the other, what's happening or what the situation is.
The only other thing about painting the outside, just some ideas that I heard some of you all, you all saying, Gary has a lot of history with like the person who comes and says, I know what the problem is. It's the eaves on the building. And then they do something to make that better. And then it happens again. Somebody like put shims up behind some of the
Yeah.
And that didn't do it. So it's just, it's really worth Gary being involved in that conversation because he has a lot of the historical knowledge of how things were fixed before and then.
And I think we may, if we can get this facilities audit done, we try and get that group out and have them maybe start here because there's a timeliness to that. Because I've also heard it may be moisture inside the building, trying to leave the building. There may be bigger problems than we know.
Right. So that's the one thing that we do need bear in mind is that most of the folks that your house came down here are purely small shops. So I already pointed, this is, this, and most of them is a big project. And if we're going to commit to it, we need to give them appropriate notice because it's not a sort of fitting over week.
So he, one of the, one of the things that he had suggested was doing half of the building this year and half of the building next year with just our local funds because his estimate was 28,000. And so 14 this year, 14 next year. But literally painting like halfway up the building and then halfway up the building.
I, I will defer to live to Dylan and to Kathy and to Carter.
The main thing is, well, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna do it. That's the main thing.
Right.
Yeah. Well, one of, one of the things that a lot of paintings are doing now is where their boards that are frequently, frequently damaged. We have, we have other older houses in Grafton. And there were places where they, there's this, it's almost like a plastic composite that looks, that looks paint exactly like, like where your wood clavoured, but it doesn't have, doesn't have the moisture issues. And that may be something that you want to consider.
Because it's what they're gonna put on.
That's exactly it.
Where they sand it off and they put two polos or whatever.
I, I'm anticipating a meeting of at least three of our six members to work that out and tell me what makes most sense. You know, I'm, I'm good at architecture, but painting and scraping, I get nothing for it. All right. So painting, windows and wall, is that part of the same thing? Or just is this because of the
I don't know what that is.
All right. We'll scratch that for the moment. Then, okay. We are then on to 9B personnel matter. Actually, why don't we, why don't we put that aside for a minute and talk about your 9, 9C, the business about masking that came up in some emails and the building usage? And then have this be the last item at the end of the meeting? All right. So why don't we do this in reverse order, building usage?
So Angela got, and she can speak more to it, but I think just so the board is aware, we have a policy in place that if an outside group is gonna use our building, that they're supposed to pay for custodial fees and other pieces of that. Previously in the past, the town has used the gym for certain things.
Town reading.
Yeah, boating, things like that. And there'd been a custodian that stayed, that was scheduled to be here anyway. That, that, those times for that custodian have changed. So that custodian is off work. And whatever events would take place would be, go later. And so in the past, nobody is charged anyone to utilize the space. But it may come up as an issue now because someone's gotta come back and lock up the building.
Five fees, but still, yeah. I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
So. Party, is this something you might just touch base with or Kathy at the next meeting? Just to get a sense. I don't think, I don't think anybody but the, the town uses this building that I'm aware of, training closely here. Have we had other events here that I?
No, but from a, from a safety perspective and a security perspective, we shouldn't be giving keys to anybody. And it should be one of our employees who's locking up the building and also on a liability issue. We need to ensure the building's closed. But if we're gonna have to ask the custodian to stay, is that something that the school is just gonna eat? Or is that something we're gonna charge back to the town? Because again, prior to, well, we're coming out of COVID, so it really hasn't been an issue for nobody here. And that's what the adjustment was made in the custodian's case. Is that like supervising that correctly?
That's the fee.
I don't know, but if they, I think the town should be the one to pick that up. If it's a town meeting.
Okay, so I think.
I just know that it would be a change and I just want it out there.
I'm going to move that we designate Partey, Merrill, and Kathy Seattle to speak to the board about the issue and get back to us.
That's what I
So I, that's my motion. Do I, do I, we have any discussion on this? Do the two people just dump this on?
I mean, the other, I mean, the other.
Say that again?
I need to know what the fees are. I, I think it's, it's the janitor stays, you know. Yeah, I mean, the
Maybe this is something you guys can figure out off on.
We could figure, we could figure it out. I mean, the other, the other option that doesn't require money is that I would adjust Gary's hours or I would just stay, you know? It's they're, they're requesting from 7:00 till 9:00, which is, but, so Gary could just come in and do his eight hour day, starting at 1:00.
I think the tradition, the, the big item usually is town meeting. I don't know of any other times when we use this building.
It's not a town meeting, voting.
On voting day.
There's a, there's a candidate's forum coming up.
Okay.
That's what it's for.
Well, as I said, Ken, Ken, I would, I'm proposing that you talk to these two folks, figure out between you what it is you want to ask of the town. I would think that if these are town events, town would probably be willing to pay what I think is very nominal fee to do that. But that's the best way to move forward. And you guys all want to join festivities at a town, at a select board meeting? Go for it. But that's up to you.
Yeah, I just wanted it out there. I didn't want it to be a surprise.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, like, why are we getting this?
All right. Well.
Be a good idea to get that figured out. Because I know in years past, like our youth group to the church in Athens has used the gym.
But that was when, but the custodian was here.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't forcing him to come back or anything.
His schedule is now changed.
So stop forcing him to come back. They have to be here the whole time.
Yeah. So There, there it is, working hours at that point.
Okay.
That we did that.
Anyway, I can just point at these two folks. That's the thing. I wrote it up as a motion, I'm gonna get votes from everybody. So since I am, Krista would say, it's okay to have these two people negotiate on our behalf?
Yeah, can I just have a quick clarifying question? Is the fee wages, like, is the fee that has to be picked up Gary's wages?
Yes.
Are we allowed to pay wages, like, require some other body to pay wages to our employees?
I know that we've been, we, we've been asked people to pay for our costs for using things. So I think that's
They don't, they're not paying the employee directly. We, we will pay them, but we will be billing the town.
And
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Then, yes.
Okay. So we got a yes? Harold?
Yeah. No problem.
Lynn? Kathy?
Yes.
We got it. Okay. That's done. We have masking. I had a request from two different parents asking what our masking policy was. Because, and I assumed it was voluntary masking. I don't know if the state has any further restrictions because in the, in the last time we met, when we was the Unified District, we agreed to follow the CDC guidelines, I believe. So
So at the beginning, before school started, we sent a notification home to families. I can pull it up, but essentially it's, masking is optional and it's a personal choice. We, as, as schools are not policing it. So if you want your child, Jack, to wear a mask in school and come tell us, we're, you know, we'll gently remind kids, but we're not going to be constantly reminding kids about their masks.
I think it was just that we, I think, and I need to go look. I think we had said to follow CDC, so if they, if CDC jumps ahead of the state in terms of mandating it, as I don't think, I think chances of our having an episode this year are probably 50/50. So that's
Yeah. But we're following the, we notified, yeah, we'll follow the CDC, the state and the Department of Health guidelines.
Yeah, if there are any changes in that, just make sure parents know. So we're gonna, and board members too. There, I covered my, my item on that. Okay. What do we got left? We got nothing left. We have this personnel matter, which we'll deal with after director's comments. So why don't we do director's comments now? And Krista, we'll start with you. And Krista, we'll start with you.
Hi, I hope everyone had a good summer and I've really enjoyed working with everyone. And I'm really grateful for the effort that's gone into the meeting on Monday. So thank you all so much for that. Really appreciate it.
So noted. Harold?
I appreciate what Angela puts on, you know, the little thing about school, the Grafton notes and stuff like that. I, I read them well and I appreciate them very much. So, and then I just had to walk through, so that was, that was neat. Thanks.
Once again, they're just so opening and friendly, the way it's all been set up. The classrooms are just, they've always been really nice. But for some reason, the paint, the colors, just feels strong this year. The happy place.
Thank you very much. Kathy?
I'm just happy to hear your comments about the staff is happy and the kids are happy.
That's what it's all about. And the learning will happen.
Hardy?
I just to thank, like to thank Angela and the staff and everybody involved in getting this place into A1 shape to start the year. And I came to the event to meet the teachers. I got my walkthrough and it was immaculate. And the teachers were wonderful and good job.
And just for mine, I, again, I ask everyone that has an interest in what goes on here, if they can stop in for the open forum discussion on September 12th at, it says 6:00 PM on this page, the date for you, 7:00 PM. And you'll be welcome. Your questions will be thoughtfully addressed. And I, I, I hope that you'll be as pleased as many of us have been. Also, did not only walk through this building, but have walked through several of the other buildings. This is easily the most, well, I mean, the cleanest. And the, and place where the enthusiasm was visible. Although I will say the high school cheerleaders put in a good show on that one. So anyway, that's it. I will, I'm going to move that we go into executive session on a personal matter. With premature knowledge, it's just either the individual or the, or this district. I don't anticipate an actual presentation, but we need a vote of the board to go into the session. And I'll start with you, Krista.
First for everything tonight. I.
That's what happens when you're the only picture on the screen. Harold?
Yes.
Yes, but before that, can you tell us when our next school board meetings?
I'm not anticipating the need for the meeting on the, that second meeting of the month. So I think we'll be meeting in October, unless there's something that I don't know about.
Are you hoping to meet at the beginning of October or the second one?
I...
You want me to advocate for one or the other?
I would like to advocate for what you like here.
The earlier just is a nice offset of the end of the month for me. That's what I prefer.
Okay. Then it would be that. So 13th, 6:00 PM, this building. So with that, was, did we get everybody on record of the meeting? Hardy?